Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen May 22 meeting. This is somewhat of an emergency meeting, which we'll get into later why we had to hold it today. But if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And this is, this meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hansen Cable in accordance with Governor Baker's orders during the pandemic for public meetings. There will be no public input on this meeting and all votes will be done via roll call and as will all comments and discussions. So with that, I thought we might just start off very quickly with a moment of silence for everybody that's fighting through the pandemic or fighting on the front lines of the pandemic and also to think about Memorial Day, which is coming up on Monday and recognize all of the brave American and men, men and women who have lost their lives while they've served our community. All right, thank you. So our meeting today is to discuss the override article that we voted to place on the June 27 ballot. As you know, last Tuesday, we met and we voted to postpone town meeting until July 20. At that time, we discussed how that postponement might impact the town election and what options were available to us. We discussed adding a special election for, to be held just for town election, only for the override and then holding that after our July 20 town meeting so that everyone would have the benefit of being able to discuss the pros and cons on town meeting floor. But ultimately, after some discussion with our town clerk and legal counsel, it was determined that it may be too burdensome and that there might be other ways for us to get the information out to citizens so that they could still vote on June 27, which is the date that we've got set for our town election. So we decided to keep the override question on the June 27 town ballot. After our meeting last Tuesday, Kate Fiedhoff, who's joining us today, our legal counsel, contacted our town clerk, Beth Sloan, and our town administrator, John Stanbrook, and me to let us know that we had to meet and provide the dollar amount to the town clerk prior to May 23rd, which is tomorrow, in order to comply with the 35 day notice requirement. That brings us to today where we are joined by Kate Fiedhoff and Kate and Kevin Sullivan to discuss and vote on the override amount that will be placed on the town election ballot. Ultimately, whatever we decide in terms of placing on the ballot, the voters will decide whether to pass an override or not. Since our meeting on Tuesday, Mr. Stanbrook, Mr. Hassett, our town accountant, and Mr. Sullivan from FinCom have all been discussing what options we have for the override amounts and what the pros and cons are for each option. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanbrook, our town administrator, to present those options. But just a reminder that today, we are not discussing the assessment methodology or the proposed amendment to the regional agreement. That's not what we're posted for. We will end up discussing that on Tuesday night. It's on our agenda and, you know, on for our regularly scheduled meeting on 5:26. So with that, I thought, I don't know, Kate, if you want to give a brief, you know, kind of framing of override, what an override is, the fact that, you know, the earmarking versus not earmarking and the concept of a general use versus an earmarked use, kind of lay the framework. And then I thought we might turn it over to Mr. Stanbrook and Mr. Sullivan to walk us through what their suggestions are.
Sure, sure. And yeah, today really is just to figure out what the number is because as we spoke about last time, you have 35 days to notify the clerk. So the Board of Selectmen takes a vote to put the question on the ballot and then the clerk must be notified within 35, with at least 35 days' notice. And there's a separate provision which provides that you have to have the text of the question. And under mass general laws, you, the question is very specific and it has to include the purpose, that can be general or specific, and the amount so that everyone has a full understanding of what they're voting on and it doesn't give carte blanche to the town to essentially raise the levy to some unknown amount. So what an override does is it increases the capacity that you're allowed to raise because what essentially Proposition 2 and 1/2 did was it put a cap on what you could add to your levy. So it limited the amount that you could tax and you can tax only from last year's up 2 and 1/2% more. And so when you need more money, you have to go and get a ballot approval, town meeting approval. So what the ballot portion does is it just changes that capacity amount, so what you're allowed to raise. And then what town meeting does is it decides what is actually going to be appropriated. So what money is taken from that available source and what is going to be used and how it's going to be expended. Now, when you frame up the question, one of the things you have to do is put in the purpose. Now, it can be broad, it can be general operating expenses, or it can be specific to, in this case, to meet the assessment under the regional school district agreement or the regional school district assessment. And where there's a contingent vote, those two have to match. But I was thinking about this and the good news is, and some, there are policy reasons why you want the election first or the town meeting first, and they're different for every circumstance. And I'm thinking actually, because we have the election coming first on the 27th, right, Laura?
Right.
27th. So we have the election first on the 27th and then comes the town meeting, often July. We can decide based on the election votes how to frame up the warrant article. So we have a little more flexibility there, which is actually good for us. So if you wanted to make it more general, you could, or you could stick with the original plan of tying it specifically to the school. Now, I want to talk quickly about the difference between the first year and all subsequent years because remember, once you increase that capacity, it's increased forever. So you have access to tap into those funds if town meeting chooses. You're not statutorily prohibited from going beyond the, what would be the current 2 and 1/2% limit. So the first year, if you put a specific purpose on the ballot question, the first year, you're stuck with that provision, meaning if you say it's to fund your school assessment, that levy increase has to be used for school assessment purposes.
Just for that first year, right?
Just for that first year, yeah. So that's the difference. Then the next year, it's unrestricted. So it just allows you to tap that capacity and naturally, you're going to have assessment issues the next year and you'll have to use those funds. But it's all, it's all money in a pot and you decide how to divvy it up at that point. But depending upon how specific your purpose is in the first year, you're limited in the first year.
Okay, that's, that's super helpful. I'm just going to quickly go around to everybody and just see if they've got any questions for Kate, just around the framework of the override general purpose versus specific earmarking and that type of thing. Mr. Dyer?
No, please, Kate.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
The only question I have, Kate, is if that fails at the ballot, then when town meeting comes around, what do we do? Just not discuss it or pass over it?
So, so remember, so if the override fails at the ballot, you're limited in terms of what you can actually raise taxation, right? What you're allowed to tax your residents. So you're only allowed to go up 2 and 1/2% and then you have to make it work within that budget, okay? And so, so for schools, remember, we only vote the bottom line. So for schools, you can, town meeting can decide to approve what they ask for, disapprove or approve a different number. If they do disapprove or approve a different number, it goes back to the school committee, right? And the school committee then decides what they're going to do. Are they going to accept that lower number and try to work and manage with that? Or are they going to send back another number to the town? The town would then have to have another town meeting and say, okay, either it's the same number or a different number, are we going to approve it? And then you have the big tent option. The big tent option passes and the school gets what they want, then it is what it is and you have to find the money and that means cutting from other pieces of the budget to give that money to the schools. And if it fails in the big tent, that's when you go to state takeover. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Blough?
No, thanks, I have.
Okay, great. Kate, I don't know if there's anything else that you feel like you need to let us know, but organically, things might crop up. I, I think at this point, if, you know, it seems like we're all super clear on, on that piece of it. I think it might be best just to cut to the chase, which is we're meeting to talk about the dollar amount and what the various options are. And Mr. Stanbrook, I would look to you to cue it up and then Mr. Sullivan chime in.
Okay, thank you very much. So I hope all of you had a, I did up a little calculator of, that I sent to everyone and I'm going to try to figure out ways to get this onto the town website so that people can use it for their own purposes, to look at their real estate and personal property tax bill and figure out whatever number gets decided today, how would that have affected you in fiscal year 20 if that amount, you know, whatever gets voted today was actually levied this year? So I think, I think everyone got that and that's something that we could use as a tool. And I just, well, I'd like to just read what the wording of the question will be. And I know Kate is on, and I just want to make sure that the wording is proper because tomorrow is the deadline. So whatever we vote today, I want to make sure that, obviously, the amount won't be in the wording, but I'd just like to read the wording and then Kate's okay with it, then, then I'll know what to type up when this meeting's over and just present to the town clerk. So this is going to be the questions, wording. Question one, shall the town of Hanson be allowed to assess an additional, and whatever amount that might be, will be inserted, that we talked about today, that we wrote, or you wrote on today? So let's try again. Shall the town of Hanson be allowed to assess an additional blank in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of paying the town's assessed share of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020? And there's a spot for a yes vote and there's a spot for a no vote. So I just, Kate, is that the proper wording with the, with the number today being inserted?
Yeah, it's certainly a permissible, a permissible purpose and it's, it's more specific. So it's specifying that these funds, and it makes clear to the public, these funds are used to fund the assessment for Whitman Hansen, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. So if everyone has the override calculator up on, on their computer, I turned it over to Mr. Sullivan to go over our various options, the town's various options and, and, you know, pros and cons of each.
Sure, thanks, John. Thank you for having me on. We had a meeting yesterday, Todd, John and myself, where we ran through several different scenarios as to what level of override we would need. We based on several different assumptions, we looked at a couple of different scenarios. Does the new, does the one year, you know, 50-50 agreement pass both towns? Does it not pass, you know, where we are from that? So, I mean, you can sort of go through the, the override calculator and look at the different sums. After, you know, some significant discussion, the three of us settled on an override of $800,000, even. We came to this conclusion, if you put $800,000 in the calculator, it comes out to about $199 per household based on a $354,000 valuation of your home. That's based on the last year's, you know, tax rate. So if your house is valued at $350,000, $354,000 and up, it would be 199 additional dollars to your taxes. If it's less than that, it'll scale down. If your house is valued more than that, it'll scale up. We settled on that number based on where we sit right now with, you know, Whitman, Hanson and the school committee. Our deficit sits at $865,000. With the approval of an $800,000 override, we would go through the town budget, trim out the remaining 65. We looked at this number because of the implications for next year. So once, this is a one-year deal, should we, should both towns approve it, next year goes to full statutory and we're, we're sort of back in the same provision we are now. So, you know, we looked at a lesser amount, we looked at a higher amount, you know, I think we, we looked at, we looked at a flat million, that's just not feasible. We look, you know, 800 was, is the number that we, we settled on and it gets us to next year. And, you know, it's, depending on how next year goes, we could be, you know, we'll still have to make cuts, we'll have stuff to go, but our fear was that if we did not do this this year, one, it would, it would cause us to have to go in and make significant cuts in the departments. And unfortunately, the major departments that bear the brunt of those are the departments that have the most personnel. You know, we, I think we all know we could go back to, as Kate mentioned, you can go back to the school with the number, but Whitman and the school committee are fairly lockstep with their number. So the number, the chances of them, you know, we looked at that, the chances of them lowering that number, I don't think is very, is very good. So we came to the 800,000. It's, I don't want to say split the difference, but it gets us through this year. It gears us up for next year to see how it changes. You know, we don't know how the revenues are going to break down. There was a lot of other things that, that factored in and we could go through a laundry list of COVID-related scenarios that changed the budget number. But we looked at this $800,000 as a realistic number to get us through next year. So, John, I think I hit all the, all the major points. You know, I think we can talk through the other ones, but, you know, Todd, Todd and I were in agreement that we think 800,000 is the number.
Okay, and I thank you, Kevin, and I should have said that to begin with. I thank you, John and Todd and the rest of the FinCom for crunching the numbers and working behind the scenes, you know, because this has been, to say it's a moving target, it's like understatement of the day. So I, the 800,000, I just want to clarify because, you know, there's only so many bites at the apple and we know what people's appetite is for an override. I don't even like to mention the old word. So I, wondering, I think I heard you say that, and again, we, we don't have a crystal ball because we don't know how COVID is going to impact us, what our revenues are going to be, growth and all that stuff. It's all up in the air and, and there's no way, and I expect any of you guys to be able to, you know, have anything specific on that. But let's say that things went along fairly evenly without any major, major disruption. Would we be looking, if things go to statutory, which seems as though it's the way that the state and others are forcing the hand to go, would we be looking at cutting staff? But you're, but what I'm hearing you say, would have some more lead time to plan for that and work through it? Is that what I'm hearing you guys say?
Yeah, so Todd and I, we ran through the scenarios and, you know, unfortunately, as you said, there's, there's too much, too many variables to say how, how next year, when we're sitting in the same spot, what that number is to overcome. You know, especially because maybe next year, we're back in a scenario where Whitman and Hanson are sort of negotiating together with the school committee. So, you know, we're in a unique spot this year where Whitman is able to go along with it. You know, in the past, in past years, both towns have come together, you know, the superintendent's put out a number, we'll say 10%, both towns have gotten together and said, hey, we can both afford eight.
Right.
And the school committee says, okay, we can live with eight. This is a unique scenario where we just, we're not there this year, but maybe next year, we're in a better spot. It's not going to be a better spot where, where, you know, cash heavy, we're still going to have to go and make some cuts because even going to statutory is going to be, it's, it's still going to require us finding money in the budget and cutting and, you know, reducing our expenses. And unfortunately, without the override to grow the revenue, the only way to get that is through cutting our expenses, you know? And we went through a wide variety of scenarios where it's going to be, you know, it's going to be as, there's going to be more difficulty next year because you're looking at things like recreation. They're not pulling in the weddings this year. That's what generates their revenue. So going into next year, you know, they're going to have to, if they want to maintain the same level, they're going to need an even larger subsidy. So their subsidy is going to have to go up. The transfer station subsidy is going to go up. The school, so, you know, we're not, I'm not saying this is, this is, this is the cure all, but this is the Band-Aid we need to get through to next year because if we, if we do not do this, it's going to be, you know, we're going to be in dire straits next year because the, the amount is just going to go, it's going to get bigger without our ability to raise, you know, the levy.
Okay, so you're saying this buys us some time and potentially next year would have more of an ability to influence the outcome of the budget than we have this year for Whitman Hanson? Okay, Mr. Stanbrook, did you have anything you wanted to add in there or any point you wanted to bring up?
No, I just, I wanted to make sure that, you know, Todd, Hassett, our town accountant is on the, on the call and I just wanted to see if he wanted to add anything at all to our, you know, about our discussion.
Great, thank you. Sorry, I didn't know Todd was on. Todd, I'm sorry I didn't acknowledge you.
Hi, Laura. Thank you. I think the only thing I would add to what John and Kevin have said, just again for context for the board, is that this does, as Kevin points out, help us get through next year. A year, a year from now, we may be in, all be in a similar situation where we're only going partway to statutory with the region. You realize that if we were to go to full statutory this year, the number is something north of 1.4 million. And given that as sort of a backdrop, I just would remind the board that 2 and 1/2% of our tax levy town-wide provides 525,000 of new revenue. So it's, you know, Kevin's right, we may be in a better negotiating position a year from now, but I just want to caution the board that, you know, we still have challenges going forward into FY '22. We did, one of the options we did talk about was a much larger override that we would step into over these two years to get to full statutory. But as Kevin said, we just didn't feel comfortable presenting that to the taxpayers at this time. So I guess, I just wanted to add that context for the board.
Okay, and I think, so the, you know, question I think on everybody's mind is if this does not pass, if, if, you know, we go along with what you guys are recommending and it does not pass, what will that mean? If we've specifically earmarked this for the schools, it seems to me as though that means we're going to be going back to Whitman Hansen Regional School District and saying, your budget didn't pass, we're not able to, I guess we've got the, we've got the option of cutting other things out of our budget and passing the budget for Whitman Hansen Regional School or saying to Whitman Hansen, our override didn't pass, we simply cannot pay what you've asked us to pay. And then we go the whole route that Kate described with the super town meeting and all that stuff that we've talked about ad nauseam. Is that correct, Kate?
Yes, that's exactly right. You summed it up, you know? If it doesn't pass, you don't have the same ability to raise taxes to cover the costs. So you have to decide to either cut, try to reject the budget and go through that whole process that I described in the beginning. Exactly right.
Okay, and because we're delaying having our town meeting until July 20th and the fiscal year begins on July 1st, it means that regardless of what happens with the override, the school district will be on a 1/12 budget, as, as will we, until such time as we sync up the, the election, the ballot and, and the town meeting and figure out what's going on between those two things. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a 1/12 plus budget, similar to what's available to towns now through the emergency legislation. The difference being that the director sets that. So he'll work with Todd and the administration, Kevin, to, to come up with what that 1/12 budget, same on the Whitman side, what that 1/12 budget looks like. But yes, because of the time constraints, that's what we're facing.
Okay, great. All right, with that, I'm going to just kind of go round robin and see if anybody's got any questions for either Kate, Todd, John Stanbrook or Kevin Sullivan. So, Mr. Dyer?
Hi, guys, thank you very much. My, my big question is, with this number of 800,000, is that building into cuts to local aid, projected local, I mean, I know we kind of covered it, but I think we have to be realistic here. I think it's time that we have to expect a cut to local aid from the Commonwealth. And, you know, I would like to see some sort of cushion built into this number because I would hate to go, have to go back and try to get another override or try to make more cuts to cover that cut. So that would be my first question.
Did you want to direct that to Mr. Hassett, I guess? I don't know.
Yeah, it could be towards Mr. Hassett or Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Stanbrook.
Okay.
So I, you know, I'll, I'll let Todd jump in on, on what that projection is, but Todd, you want to?
Well, first of all, fortunately, you know, we're not as dependent as some communities such as cities are on state aid. So I think you're right, Matt, to bring up these concerns. It's not likely any of us will know what, what the state number is for, for some time yet. What I would say is that during our discussions, Kevin and John and I, there was talk about, suggestion about utilizing free cash and some other one-time sources to try to plug some of this 800,000. And, you know, I cautioned them that, you know, when we're all back together in the fall, before we set our tax rate, it could be likely, to your point, that some sort of revenue is lagging, whether it's motor vehicle excise or state aid or even, even our growth. So, you know, we've sort of taken the position that we're going to try to maintain some of our reserves rather than, as we might typically use them at this annual town meeting, so that if we need a stopgap in the fall, it may be a combination of budget reductions and use of some of these other sources.
And it's, thanks, Todd. Sorry to jump in. The, you know, we also looked at if, depending on how this goes, we may have to look at some of the other warrant articles for capital projects. You know, those, that sort of item might have to go on hold. So, you know, we looked at all the scenarios and Todd made a great point with sort of, you know, we need to make sure we have some sort of reserve base.
Okay, Mr. Dyer, did that help, you know, was that responsive to your question?
No, that, that was definitely helpful. So kind of going back to the figure of 856 being our current deficit, I know we were just talking about one-time, you know, sources or free cash or whatever, but as we go forward, I know Mr. Sullivan has that same feeling that I do, free cash is just a Band-Aid to fixing an overall issue. So if, why, why should we stop at 800 rather than go for the whole 856? It's only $12 more on the difference or the potential override.
We, we looked at that and we came to the conclusion that We, we looked at that and we came to the conclusion that we sort of, looking at the calculator, where it put that sort of $354,000, you know, your house is valued at $354,000, the 800 came out with sort of the nice round number. You know, we could, we say we could have gone higher, but, you know, we thought that that sat at a, at a good level. You know, it shows some ability on our side. You know, it's not a, it's not a big concession on ours, but, you know, we can go through and if, if the citizens of Hanson are generous enough to provide this override that is much needed, you know, we can go through and, and make some cuts to get the other 65. So, that's, that's what we looked at it as. You know, the 800,000 is a significant number. I, I, these are difficult times, I understand that completely. But we're also looking at the other side of the coin where is if, if this was full statutory, you know, the, the number is 1.5 million. So, the, we, we felt that the 800 is, it sits, it's right in the middle, depending on what kind of scenarios unfold over the next month or two.
Okay, I'll set, Mr. Dyer.
And my, my last question is, I'm sorry, I misspoke, 865 rather than 56, sorry. But my last question is, we're kind of talking about cuts at 800,000. What do these cuts look like? Do we have any idea? I know we probably dink into department-specific cuts, but what, what does this look like for cuts of services to the public if we?
With or without the, without the override?
Well, with the override, we're $65,000 short. What do these cuts look like?
I mean, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be personnel cuts. I'm confident that we could find $65,000 in, you know, across, across all town departments, we could find $65,000 to bridge the gap between, you know, what we need and what we have. And it would allow, you know, the citizens of Hanson to retain the same level of service they, they're used to. The same amount of firemen, the same amount of policemen. Where we get into difficult times will be as if the override isn't approved because there's just not that, there's, there's not $865,000 in the budget for us to go through with a fine-tooth comb and pick out without reducing headcount. Because in all the, in all the circumstances, headcount is the largest, you know, is where the majority of the money comes from.
But it's a one-two punch, right? It, we, we would have to fund the budget for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and not pass the override in order for us to have to do the cuts that we're discussing.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Kevin, Todd and Kate for their time this afternoon. We appreciate it. I just have one question, Todd. So, if the override goes through, is it possible to increase the tax rate in the fall to fill in the gap between the 50-50 assessment and the statutory assessment, which is going to come up next year?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, Kenny. I mean, certainly between now and the fall, when new construction is a little more clear, the assessors, you know, perhaps may come up with a little more levy, allowable levy. So, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, are we able to increase the tax rate if we have a shortfall, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, no, to what, to point to what Kate said in her initial remarks, we'll have a levy limit set that may, may or may not include this additional over, these additional override funds. And we're, we're not allowed to levy above that amount.
Okay.
So, yeah, absent growth or, you know, another override, if you will, a future override, we, we wouldn't. You know, we're, we're looking to utilize the available levy just to, to get to this sort of midpoint, as Kevin was saying.
So, it's possible we'd have to do another override again next year?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hickey.
Hi, I do appreciate all the work that has been done on this. I know it just had to be painstaking to go through it. Kevin, I, I have a question for you. And I was, I was listening to you speak and, you know, you went through all the figures. And basically, if I could put it into a nutshell in layman's terms, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but this is a one-year fix. Am I correct?
That's correct. I mean, this is, this, this override will get us to next year's budget, where, you know, there are so many, we, we tried to run through the scenarios, but we just don't know where we're, what next year is going to bring. You know, if the, if the Whitman-Hanson doesn't open in the fall, you know, is there cost savings there? There's, there were so many scenarios that we couldn't pull together all the numbers. But yes, this is a one-year fix, but it's not to say that next year, all of a sudden, with this override, next year, we're not going to be cash flush. We're going to be back at the drawing board like we are every year. You know, every year, it's, every year, it's a challenge. Every year, we have to, you know, in the past, we've been able to, we've had a strong negotiating standpoint with the schools, both towns, and we've been able to go through and negotiate a better deal. This year, we, we're getting, you know, this is the best deal we're getting right now. Because I think, you know, as Kate mentioned, you can go back to the school with a number, but it's from, from what we're hearing and on those school, I've, I've listened into the school committee meetings, I've listened into the Whitman Selectmen and their FinCom, you know, they seem pretty firm on their stance. So, you know, I think this gets us through to next year.
Okay, okay, so, and it was mentioned, I actually wrote it down when Laura said, we don't have a crystal ball and we don't know what's going to happen. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this is a one-year fix and we will be back here again next year. Maybe similar to what we're doing now.
Sure, and, and, but I guess my point, Jim, would be that, you know, yes, we're, we're probably going to, there's, we're going to have a challenge again next year, but without an override, it's going to be dire straits next year. We're going to be in a significant problem.
I, I absolutely agree with you on that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear. I didn't know if I wasn't clear.
Oh, no, you were definitely clear, but my, my, my thing is, is that obviously we, or at least I would hope, we won't, we wouldn't be going for an 800,000 more next year, but it's going to be a significant jump, most likely, but we don't have that crystal ball.
That's right.
Okay, I, and I appreciate you answering that question. I do have a question for Kate, and I'm not even sure, Laura, because you prefaced at the beginning of the meeting that we could only talk about certain things. So, if we do approve an override today, what happens if the other town, if that was not acceptable? With comments that Kevin made earlier, you know, there's a, a possible deal in place, but what happens if that deal doesn't happen? And we've already voted on the override, Kate.
So, the, remember, the override is just the ability to add more money to pull from. So, so it just because the 2.5 says you can only go here, you can only raise taxes by this amount, and so you have so many millions of dollars available to you. If the override passes, the money's available, but it doesn't necessarily mean you use it. You don't open your wallet and have to pay it. So, it's the town meeting that decides how much do I want to appropriate of that available amount. So, so for example, here's an example. For ten, we didn't have an override. Um, every year, we decide, do we want to go up the whole 2.5%? There are some communities that don't go up that amount, that 2.5%. They leave money on the table that was available to them. Now, whether or not that's smart or not is a, is a policy question that's different, but they don't have to appropriate, meaning take the money and, and make it, and actually use it just because it's available to them. So, the, the override question is just to make it possible if the town meeting wants to appropriate it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll set, Jim?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, awesome. Mr. Boss?
I understand our position. I really am not going to second-guess Kevin and John and Todd and Greer. It's like, this is where we are, so I'm, I'm there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boss. So, I, I guess you guys are the financial experts. You're the team that we've got together and you're the dream team. And unfortunately, we didn't give you a dream assignment, but you are the dream team. So, I guess I'll entertain a motion. And, and Kate, can you guide us here? Does the motion just specifically need to say, should we be reading the amendment that Mr. Stanbrook just, I'm, I'm sorry, the warrant article that Mr. Stanbrook just read, which I'm not sure any of us have right in front of us, so we might have to impose upon Mr. Stanbrook to read it and then we'll fill in the dollar amount?
Yeah, so it would be, I vote to place on the ballot the question as follows. Shall the town, and how John reads it with inserting the $800,000 figure?
Okay, Mr. Stanbrook, may I impose upon you?
Uh, yes, that's no problem at all. I just want to make sure that this is only to place the article, I'm sorry, the question on the annual town election. It's not, you know, a vote for it or against it. It's only to, it, it goes on the ballot at the election. You know, you're not, you're not saying you yet, you, you want it or you don't, just you're voting.
No, we're saying that we want voters to make a, to have the ability to make the decision on this.
Okay, so with that, I'll, I'll read it again. So, question one, shall the town of Hanson be allowed to assess an additional $800,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of paying the town's assessed share of the FY, sorry, fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020? And there's a yes in a spot and a no in a spot to check off.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Okay, I think it was, okay, great, thanks, Jim. So, we've got it moved and seconded and any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Boss? Mr. Boss?
You have that one?
Okay, and Ms. Kemet, aye. And with that, I thank everybody for doing this the Friday before Memorial Day and hope you all have a lovely long weekend. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved by Matt?
Absolutely seconded by Jim.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Boss?
Aye.
And Ms. Kemet, a resounding aye. All right, take care, guys, and stay safe.
Thank you, everyone.